And unfortunately. Caitlin, did you start the meeting? Do you have the Caitlin, you might have the controls to go to? Oh yeah, can you give, can you give me host? So I can do run it to Facebook?
Yeah, how do I do that?
I think if you, if you hover over me on the right on the attendee list and go to more and say, give assign host.
Done.
Yep, there we go. Thank you. Okay. Just another moment while I get this going to Facebook.
What's, what's this one come from? Is that what it's called?
We can hear you, Chris, by the way. We are, we are broadcasting live on Facebook now as well. So. Just switch to the title screen. I'll get us going, Chris.
Sounds good.
Well, that's the wrong one. All right, can everybody see? The village board meeting? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a little after six, 6:03 October 19th, regular meeting of the, on a key village board. For those who are attending in the public, you are automatically muted. As the host of the meeting, I'm able to bring you in to speak when that opportunity comes up. And there is a public comment section on the agenda and there the board accepts comments on items either on or not on the agenda. Those comments are limited to two minutes per attendee and there's a little raised hand button on your screen for Zoom if you do care to speak. And those participating by phone can also raise their hand at that time by pressing star nine. For the board members and our presenters, everybody should try to remain muted unless you need to participate. And except for board members, if you have an item on the agenda that isn't being discussed, please turn off your video as well. When board discussion occurs, the village president will call upon board members to physically raise their hand like this to make comments. And then for roll call, for all votes, roll call will be taken to make sure we get all the votes correct. With that, I'll turn it over to village president to call the meeting to order.
Okay, I'm going to call this village board meeting for Monday, October 19th to order roll call, please.
Nyla Frye. Here, here in Hertzburg.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Bill Random.
Here.
Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Elmer.
And I am here. The first item we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices and online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on October 15th. And the final agenda was posted all three village posting locations on October 15th and the final agenda and packet were made available online on October 15th.
Thanks Caitlin. All right. Next item we have is consent agenda. Would anyone like anything pulled or I look for a motion? Nyla.
I move to approve items one, two, three on the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Nyla Frye. Do we have a second? Kristen Rungy, second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Random?
Yes.
Chris Elmer?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next on the agenda is our public comment section. If there's anybody here in attendance that would like to make a comment that on an item that's on or off the agenda, please raise your hand and we will, Todd will let you in. We see we have three attendees.
Yes, he's three attending there. I don't see any, any hands up at the moment. And before we jump into new business, Chris might consider, I know we have the contractor for the Northridge Shelter. On the call, there's several items down. I wonder if you might want to consider putting that up to handle first?
Sure. Does anybody have any, any? Any reason to not allow that? Please raise your hand if you do. Okay, seeing none yet, we can reorder for that, Todd.
Okay.
The other public comment I would make is that I want to thank Caitlin and her staff for all the things they've already been doing with regards to voting. And I know it's going to get quite a bit more hectic starting tomorrow as people can come and vote in person and at Village Hall. Caitlin, do you have anything you want to add to that or is that, is that enough?
I'm going to be giving more of a report during our item number one on our agenda.
Nice. Okay. That sounds good then. All right. Any other public comments from any other board members? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then. So under new business, we're going to reorder number four, discuss and take action on the Northridge Park shelter bids. Todd, who's introducing that?
Will that be Sue? Sue, are you on?
There she is.
And then, and then Sue. The, oh, there we go. Doug is here. Okay.
Super. So we are talking about the park shelter in Northridge Park. And we opened bids on that project on September 24th. We received seven bids on the project, six of them in a very nice grouping of numbers, which usually tells us that the contractors had a very good understanding of the project in front of them. And things are on target. Our latest engineer's estimate for this project was $380,000. And actually our low bidder is Harmony Construction out of Madison at $332,566. We're very pleased with that number, pleased with the company who is our low bidder and we would like to recommend that that contract be approved tonight. Doug Powell from Arrow Everly Architects is also with us. He is our consulting architect and engineer. So if you have questions specifically about the project, one of the two of us should be able to help you.
Okay, I'll start actually Phil as chair of the parks department, any comments from you?
Yes, thank you very much. The parks committee met six, eight times on this and we went back and forth. We're very pleased with what we came up with. We're very pleased with the contractor that won the bid. We can't find any better thing to do than to recommend approval of this project as presented.
Okay.
And I would make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? So we have a second by Bill Random. So I do want to give the other board members chances to speak if you have any questions for the contractor, since he's here tonight, or I'm sorry, from architects. Does anyone have any questions? If so, please raise your hand.
Hey Sue, what are, what are we thinking starting date?
So we, we purposefully left the completion date. Later next summer, what we found in the past is that giving contractors the ability to adjust their timeline for what works best for them has been a benefit. I think we found that to be the case. I do think if the weather cooperates, Harmony is thinking about starting yet this fall. But I also heard that it might snow this week. So we'll get the contract signed and then we'll see what works best for them.
All right, great. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Selmer.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg. Believe I read his lips to be a yes.
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Random?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just, Chris, I'll just expect that thank you card from Doug in about two days, maybe three. Mail's busy.
I appreciate you guys reordering the agenda for me. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Have a nice night.
All right, next item we have is discuss discussion and update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd, are you taking this or is Caitlin?
You, well, yeah, I'm most, mostly I like to turn over to Caitlin, but I do have Scott Russell on the call who's been kind of updating us routinely on things in the, in the world of public health in our village. Scott, anything to share tonight?
Um, I think everyone's kind of well aware that things are getting worse at a very rapid rate around here. Um, a lot of the emphasis of public health right now is going into that makeshift hospital that went up down in Milwaukee. There's a lot of guidelines as to what's going to end up seeing as far as patients being transferred down there. I know there's already patients going down there from our area. If you haven't heard, Wisconsin's actually one of the front runners now as far as positive COVID cases go in this country. The biggest issue the public health is seeing right now is people testing positive are saying that they were out in groups of people that they didn't know. So going out to big gatherings, large gatherings, things like that seem to be the, the ticket to where people are catching this stuff. So we're just sitting here kind of preaching to people, stay home, wear your mask if you do have to go out, make sure to take care of yourselves, kind of the same message we've been saying this whole time. Unfortunately, I think some of the worries and fears are coming true right now with all these numbers spiking up right as we come into, into flu season like this. To put it in perspective from our end, we've been seeing a pretty steady number of patients as far as positive COVID patients go. And over the weekend, our numbers went up exponentially as far as our transports that we had into the hospital. More and more people are getting it and more and more people are being hospitalized. The medicine hospitals are starting to see some issues as far as available beds, available ICU beds. I just found out today the hospital up in Portage, their ICU is just about full and they're starting to have to send patients out. So this is actually getting to be very real around here and I, in my eyes, worse than it was at the get go. So definitely stay diligent out there, be safe, protect yourselves, protect others. It's really just the same message. Just, just keep it up. Try not to let that COVID fatigue set in. We're going to be in this probably all winter long. So we're in it for the long haul. It's really about it. Thanks, Todd.
Board members, any questions for Scott? Please raise your hand if you have any questions. Okay, seeing none, I would just ask Bill if you have any comments as well?
No, actually, it's, it's actually going to get worse because the, the business of COVID is that it's about a week after the cases show up that we start to see the, the hospitalization. So we are, every hospital in the area is now talking about whether they're going to shut down elective surgeries again. And which then will result in basically a stalling of a, the whole process of healthcare again. So I really do expect that will happen. This is even though the average time it takes us to treat somebody has dropped in half. The number of people is that are sick is going to go up by at least that much just because of the volume of new positives. So for all the new positive, we basically say, we know that about 10% of them are going to end up in the hospital at different age groups. So, and that is, so Scott's just transporting the beginning of it. He's not transporting the top of it yet. So. And it may involve the city. I mean, I would imagine that the county at some point when they stop doing elective surgeries, that all these things are triggers to the, to the county and to the local agency shutting the world down hard again. So I would expect it.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. One question for Scott. Scott, do you have all the necessary resources right now to take care of everything that's needed?
Yeah, we do actually. Thank you. Yeah, we have plenty of PPE. Actually, the, our vendors as well as county, Dane County EMS and the state stockpile has really been huge for us. We've never run into any kind of shortages of PPE or, or resources on our end to be able to keep our guys safe. So we've actually been doing fairly well.
Okay, so you guys are set up then for this peak and it's calm.
Yep, absolutely.
Good. Great to hear. Okay, Todd, go back to you.
And I'll toss it over there to Caitlin. We wanted an update tonight about COVID and safety prep for the election coming up. So fill us in.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you for giving me time to do this. So I'll just give a little bit of information on where we're standing right now on our numbers. Obviously, we've been pushing absentee voting and requesting your ballot to all of our registered voters in the village of Wannakee. Just for context, we have roughly 10,000 registered voters in the village of Wannakee. So far as of today, I think I pulled the report at like two o'clock, we have issued just about 6,000 absentee ballots via the mail. So that is, that's, that's, you know, almost two thirds or about two thirds. Of those 6,000, as of again today at two o'clock, we have about 4,000 of those returned. So a good kind of understanding for you. Now, not every registered voter decides to vote in an election. We typically see around 8,000 voters in a November presidential election. So that leaves you with about 2,000 voters out there that we haven't heard from or haven't asked for ballot. In-person absentee voting begins tomorrow at Village Hall at 7:00 AM. We're expecting a large turnout for in-person absentee voting. I wish you guys could go and see our boardroom because Lori and the team at Village Hall have done a really good job about setting up in-person absentee voting to meet all of the requirements set forth by our public health officials. So there's plexiglass up on the board chamber tables. There are only three voting booths in the room. We have marks on the floor for six feet apart. We have in addition to two poll workers handing out in-person absentee ballots and checking people in. We have one person who's solely going to be doing registration. And then we have what we're calling as a bouncer at the door. We'll monitor the crowd in the building and make sure that we have no more than 10 people or what we can hold in the building safely. So if people do show up, they may be asked either if it's really cold, wait in their car and wait for someone to walk out and they can come in or wait in line outside of our buildings. We just don't want us to be overwhelmed with people in Village Hall. So that's a little bit about in-person. In-person absentee again starts tomorrow and will end on Friday, October 30th at 5:00 PM. And this will be taking place during normal business hours of 7:00 AM to 4:15. No appointment is necessary. People can just come on down at that time. People can also come just to register. If they just need to register to vote and want to show up at the polls in person on election day, they can come down to Village Hall and choose just to register in person as well. So that's a little bit about that. So for the remainder of our voters who choose not to do a mail ballot or choose not to do in-person absentee voting, we will have obviously the polls open on election day. I feel like we've had some good two elections, April and August as good dry runs for all of our safety precautions in place at the polling place. So implementing the same stuff we've been doing for the last two elections, we are having social distancing at the polling place, one way in, one way out of the polling places. There'll be a signage on the door that says, please don't enter if you're feeling any of these symptoms. Please, please do curbside voting. Voters will be asked to sanitize their hands as they enter the polling place and as they exit the polling place, they'll be asked to sanitize their hand. People are going to be asked to bring their own pen. If they choose not to bring their own pen, they will be gifted a pen from the village of Wannakee to have for forever. Because they're going to take that pen and sign the poll book and then they'll use that pen to mark their ballot and leave, really trying to minimize that cross contamination with multiple things. The polling place will be sanitized roughly every 10 minutes. We have two people, one in each polling place dedicated to just straight sanitizing all of the booths and all of our counters. Poll workers will be asked to sanitize their hands as much as possible. And when they see fit, we also will have gloves available for them if they would like, but we all know the science about gloves. People think they're more that, you know, that they're invincible when they wear the gloves. So we will be encouraging continuing regular hand washing and changing of those gloves if they do choose to wear them. Public Works, I know we have Bill on the call, back in April, made some sneeze guards for us for that basically plexiglass with wood that puts another barrier between a voter and the election workers. Poll workers are required to wear face coverings while working. We also have face shields available for those workers who are not behind the sneeze guards who choose to wear them. So think about our greeters, things like that. All poll workers will be screened on election day to make sure they're not symptomatic as well, including temperature taking and answering those basic questions. That's, that's a lot of our protocols in, in, for election day itself. We get a lot of questions about, are we going to be able to process all the absentee ballots on election day? Because you know, as you guys probably all know, when you absentee vote, then someone pretends or acts like you on election day and processes your ballot through the regular process, through going to the poll book and running it through the machine. We are going to be implementing a pre numbering process on the Saturday before the election. So whatever ballots we get back by Friday will be prenumbered by election inspectors on that Saturday before to cut down on some of that time of waiting in line. Because as of right now, all the election will, all of the absentee ballots in the election will happen on one day. Those extended deadlines that people probably heard about in the news that Judge Connolly approved, that has been overturned by the Seventh Circuit Court. We are, there is already a petition into the Supreme Court to get their decision on the case, but as of right now, all absentee ballots need to be received at the polling location by 8:00 PM on election day. There, some of the court order says that they just need to be postmarked by election day, but can be received by Monday. But my message to all voters, the best way to make sure your vote is going to count on election day is to have it to us on election day. Then you don't have to worry about postmarks, the post office and that. To help with getting back all of those ballots, we have implemented the use of drop boxes. Right now we have a special Dropbox outside of Village Hall. It's a brown postal mailbox that's labeled to be returned absentee ballots. On election day, that Dropbox will be moved to the village center. So if people want to drop off their ballots, they don't need to walk into the polling place. They can put it in that mailbox. There's also a Dropbox at Village Hall that we will be checking regularly on election day. So lots of options for people who don't maybe are worried about putting their ballot in the mail system. So lots of options, lots of information. My message to everyone is when in doubt, just give us a call at Village Hall. A lot of people call and say, I'm so sorry to bother you right now. And we said, no, it's okay. We'd rather have the questions now than the wondering later or the call on election day. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have. We're about two weeks away. So.
Board members, questions? Please raise your hand. Aaron?
Earlier you had said, well, first of all, thank you for all you're doing. This is crazy and I'm glad you all are on top of it. You had said earlier that people don't need to make an appointment. Can they make an appointment to vote in person absentee?
Um, we are not taking appointments because it'd just be too hard to manage. It's kind of a first come, first served for the people who are there. I would, I would recommend to people to avoid tomorrow because I think tomorrow's will be really busy and so is later next week. So I would tell people if you're available to come at an off time, I would encourage to do that.
Sounds good.
Any other board members? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing that Caitlin.
One more thing. I just want to give another thank you to Lori Help, Lynn and Kylie at Village Hall. I'm successful because they help and they're successful because we just support each other and I just want to give them a really good shout out for all the hard work they have done. When I say 6,000 ballots have gone out, a good majority of them have been done by the three of them or coordinated by them. So I just want to give a thank you to our village staff because they really helped make this election possible as well.
Thanks for sharing that Caitlin, for everybody to see I'm here as well and that you're absolutely correct and that it's a team effort and you guys are doing a fantastic job. So, great. And then, and then there's Todd, who's also doing a fantastic job. And I didn't say it for public comment, but congratulations to Todd for becoming the president of the, I'm always going to say this wrong, so I'm going to have you say it.
The League of Wisconsin Municipalities.
The League of Wisconsin Municipalities.
I'm actually more excited about having celebrated my 10 year anniversary with the village last week.
So there is two great things for Todd this week. So we'll put those out there for him. So congratulations for both of those things, Todd, and thank you.
Appreciate it. And before we move off this topic, Chris, thank you guys. So we've got a majority, the, the entire village management team here with us tonight. Now, on the topic of COVID, we've got our, our village webpage where we routinely go and make sure that information is up to date and is the latest and greatest for our public. Do any of you have questions for any particular department? Related to COVID.
Board member, raise your hand if you have any questions for any of the different departments? I guess I just have one. I'll just, Alice, Eric, because Eric, you know, running our new library, Eric, have we been able to, maybe you can share what the library is all capable of right now for the public with regards to COVID?
Hi, thanks, Chris. Yeah, so, thank you. So yes, we are open and we are allowing people to come in and browse our shelves right now. Our hours are a little bit limited from what they were pre-COVID, but we're still open 52 hours a week. Our book drop is open 24/7. So we are open for business. The only thing that we can't accommodate right now are small groups of people studying all day or in meetings. But apart from that, you're welcome to come in and browse the shelves and check out.
Perfect, which is what I wanted the community to hear. And I see the bird is out here and the participants so, or attendees. So hopefully she'll put something in the paper about that. Because I'm going to jump right from Eric right over to Sue McDade, who's our other person who has our manager that has people coming into her facility on a regular basis, in addition to Cindy, when Cindy will be next, but go ahead, Sue.
So Village Center is open. We open the fitness center back up in June. We are by appointment only, limited number of participants at any one time in the building. But we've received just great feedback from our customers saying that they feel super safe when they're in the facility and healthy because they get to come in and get some physical exercise. My team is also working really hard to try to do some things that people are used to doing. So we had a very successful youth baseball season. Jeff Scog is just been working overtime to make sure that we're meeting all of the Dane County requirements and putting together a program that's safe for the people that are participating. Connie and Travis doing the same things. We're ice skating. And so that's something that nobody minds wearing a face mask. And we reduced our numbers and so the kids are out on the rink taking ice skating lessons. Just like you said earlier, it takes a team and the whole Village Center team is working every day to make sure that we can at least offer some of the services that, that we offer to the public.
Thank you, Sue. And I'm going to jump over to Cindy if you, if you don't mind Cindy, maybe share with the seniors and what we, what we're trying to do and what we're able to accomplish right now.
Well, we're doing limited services, including foot care and massage therapy. You have to make appointments for those things. Very limited programming is going on. We're showing a movie on Friday afternoons twice a month with only 10 people allowed. If more than 10 people sign up, we show the movie the following Friday again. We have four people who comfortably bowling. We have a few people who come to do wood carving, but it's all very minimal. We're, we just worry so much about this population and if they're exposed to something. The case managers who are doing Medicare Part D enrollment right now, this is a huge time for them, but they have to do it a whole new way. They are doing it primarily over the phone by phone appointments. We did set up an area up on our stage with plexiglass divider and if they do need to see someone face to face, but primarily it'll be done over the phone. The service is greatly needed by the seniors and right now the case managers have about 140 phone appointments already set up. So they're, we're still trying to give our seniors what we can. Home delivered meals have been delivered throughout all of this. Those numbers are going up again now. They had dropped off some, but we'll probably see those climb. The staff is just doing everything we can to let people know we're here and doing as much as we can for them.
Thanks, Cindy, for, for sharing with that. And I don't want to, you know, belittle or not belittle, it's not the right word. I don't want anybody to feel left out. So for the other departments that are on here, I know that you guys are all. For the other departments that are on here, I know that you guys are all doing a fabulous job. I hear about it all the time. I hear from residents, citizens, people that come from out of town about, for example, our Public Works Department and, and how things look within our community. Taking care of all of that to our police. And I know Adam is on here as well. You know. This is not an easy time for them as well as they're, they're, they're involved with the COVID related thing on a consistent basis. So new challenges there with them. I see Dave Cup is on here from our fire, same, same situation. Those guys are, are there 24 hours a day getting out and seeing people. And if there's a need. Whether it be a car accident or whatever, they're, they're exposed and they're there and, and ready to help right away. Right into, you know, Jody, Renee, and Caitlin and Kevin, all within Village Hall and when things are happening there. They're, they're there to react for our public. So my kudos are given to all of you for here that are here tonight to give these updates and. I just want to thank all of you again for all the work and, and efforts you're putting in for our community. It's. It's a thing of pride for all of you, I know, and you guys are meeting that. So I appreciate it. Okay.
Yeah, one of the interesting curveballs that we're getting thrown as departments is our staff are experiencing exposures. We've very fortunate that we've had nobody, no employees confirmed as a case. But employees have been in contact with or employees, immediate family members have been in contact with. So there's these points of contact that are being recognized and. Departments are doing a great job letting us know, letting Caitlin and I know. Immediately when something, something like that is a scare, but that immediately sends that employee. Home for a period of time. We do the right things to make sure they're safe and being, and being back into the workplace. So that's been a, some hoops we've been jumping through on a routine basis. It's at least weekly that we are having some employee. Have some level of contact scare. So that's been interesting as an employer to manage staff that way.
Absolutely. I'm just going to close this section. Todd, is there anything else that you have for this?
No.
So I'm just going to close with wash your hands. Don't touch your face. Limit your touches to your face as best you can. Make sure you're social distance. And what's the last one I'm missing, Bill? Wear your mask. Sorry, I put you on the spot. Wear your mask if you're out there. So masks, wash your hands and eliminate your touch face touching and, and social distance. That's the best thing we can do for us all right now for helping all, all of us as a community. So. All right, moving on. Number two, we've got discuss and take action to place on file proposed 2021 operating and capital improvement budget. Renee and Todd, you have the floor. We had a great meeting earlier in regards to the budget and I'm excited for it to be. Shared with the rest of our board members and public tonight.
Thanks, Chris. So in the packet, there was a lot, you know, hundreds of pages of information. So we're definitely not going to go through all of those details. I'm going to focus on the slide presentation, but certainly we have all of our management team members here. On the call that we can address specific questions or if there's something, you know, in the details that you want to. Get into that's fine, but we're not going to go, you know, line by line or anything through all of those handouts that were included.
So I know as Renee is going through this with her slides, I'm going to share a screen, but I'll keep an eye on the grid. View. So I'll be, if the, any board members have questions, raise your hand. I'll be, are we keeping an eye or just, just speak up midway?
Right, because I won't be able to see people when I'm sharing my screen. So you know, I tend to just plow through things, but I want to be sure that. You know, since I, in the boardroom, I'd be able to see your, you know, your faces and your body language and I could pause. So just, you know, interrupt me or Todd will help facilitate that. As I'm going through the presentation. So. That said, I'm going to share my screen. Now. Sorry, the, I have to move that for a second. Okay, can everybody see that presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Here we go. So similar to prior years, I'll just go through the process. It hasn't really changed this year. Our departments start looking at their budgets and developing those back in June. So we. We've been going at this for a while now, but. The process begins in June and then in the July through September timeframe. Myself and Todd primarily work through the budget and any. Hiccups that we see and we talk with the department heads or village board members as needed. Earlier, there was a finance committee at meeting at five o'clock and we talked through the budget policies. Which they did approve with no changes to the prior year. Tonight is our budget proposal presentation. So this is where we take your feedback. And we answer any questions so that we can, if need to, go back and. Make any changes prior to our next budget meeting. So we have a couple of public hearings that will be coming up in November. On November 2nd, we added this a couple of years ago. It's kind of an additional non-required public hearing. Because we received feedback that, you know, if people speak on the night of the budget adoption, it's really hard to make any changes. So we added. The November 2nd meeting as an extra opportunity for the, to hear from the public, which gives us some time to make any changes. Before that required public hearing, which takes place on November 16th. And that is the night when the board formally approves the budget. So. In preparing the 2021 budget, we still have a few unknowns. Most things we, we have our estimates at this point. But the manufacturing assessment. We usually don't get this till very early November. It's completed by the state of Wisconsin, so we don't really have control over when we get those numbers. And so I have made some projections and hopefully my projections are good or on the conservative side so that when those final numbers come in, it doesn't. Really change anything dramatically with this proposed budget. Also, at this point, we don't know any of the levies for the other jurisdictions. I have on the screen. The typical breakdown. I don't see that changing very much. In terms of the, the share of the overall tax bill, the village is about 28%. In the school is 54%. The vast majority comes from the school. And so, you know, we get those over the next several weeks, we get everybody's. Estimates that we can then plug in to, to come up with our final. Mill rate. I'm going to let Todd talk about this slide for, for a moment.
So the, as Renee and I enter every budgeting process, we take a look at the circumstances and determine whether. Some particular instructions should be given to departments as they prep their budgets. We also meet with the village president and the village president gives. Instructions as well on what expectations they might have for us to focus on in the department preparations. So this year, this bullet list here touches on what it was that we, we instructed. Departments were at, were told not to increase. Non-payroll portions of their budgets. It's not an easy task when, as we all know, expenses go up around us, but even in some departments, there, there may have even been a slight decrease, but. That, that was the task and the departments met that. Departments were also told. To keep staffing levels the same. I'm going to circle back to that point in a moment. I can give some color to that. The village president, I would add, did reach out directly to the fire district and EMS district. And made a request that they were to keep their increases at a minimum in light of. In light of, in light of the economic conditions around us. The village president also is advised staff. That we propose a 2% cost of living adjustment. That's an across the board wage increase. For our staff and maintain the benefit, benefit levels. From prior year budget. At the same time, the village president directed us to propose a budget. That showed no increase in the assessed tax rate. In other words. If we approve that sort of budget. And a property owner who had no change in their property value from last year to this year would see no change. In the amount they pay on their tax bill for municipal purposes. So this budget achieves all of those things, but I, and, and. I think it's, it's worth sort of doing a thumbs up. Yay, I'm glad we accomplished that. But I would circle back up to the notion of departments maintaining staff levels. Reminder, and I actually don't have to remind you, you know that we're a growing community. The population on the sign at the edge of the village. Currently reads 13,855. The Department of Administration's January 1. To 2020 population is 14,399. So we are, we are a growing community. We have added developments that bring added streets and added parkland. Added brush collection, added patrol miles. Added population that places pressure on, on your staff. I would say if pandemic wasn't the, the thing that changed our conditions this year. And if we weren't feeling these guidance. Principles which have been very appropriately. Put upon us. I would expect that you would have seen a request for another police officer or a police staff member. And a request for another Public Works employee because of the pressures facing those departments. So I, I don't want to ignore that there is. That that dynamic is felt within your departments in, in the budget that we're proposing. So. And we can spend time talking about that or what the impact would be of adding positions if you care to do that. On different aspects of the budget later on in the process. So any questions about that guidance that, that we use to advise departments out of the gate? All right, punting it back to you, Renee.
Hey, thanks, Todd. So as Todd said, we were able to achieve that goal of a 0% increase to the assessed, assessed tax rate. Keeping that at 5.931 where it was last year. So our five-year average. It's, we're actually going down from that. Or yeah, our five-year average is decreasing. So. Yeah, sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a second, but our equalized assess. Or equalized tax rate is going up just a very minimal amount. So if you remember, that's the equalized value is our fair market value. Which. You know, is, is something that helps people compare communities. To other communities, but it really has no bearing on the tax bill and it is, you know. Maintaining a pretty. Minimal increase there. So again, as Todd mentioned, if, if people's home values remain the same as last year. The village share of the taxes would be the same. And this is kind of a slide that shows. Some. Amounts where you can extrapolate to your own tax bill. Just of note, the, the average village home now is valued at 370,267. That's up just a couple thousand dollars from last year where it was about 367,000. So values still rose a little bit. We saw the biggest increases last year when we had our market valuation done. So I'd say most, most people's values are probably pretty stable to where they were last year. In the general fund, that's, you know, our main operating fund, we're, we're showing about 1.88%. Increase in expenditures. A lot of that goes to the, the COLA and the step increases and the health. The benefits. They all factor into why we have an increase in the general fund.
I think the other thing I'd add is, is you often see for growing communities and increasing general fund expenditure makes all the sense in the world. There's added tax base, there's added. Services required to serve the tax base, therefore expenditures increase. And relatively quick growing community and we've seen. That average increase relatively high. There you can see on the screen annually on a five-year average, we've been seeing about 6%. Per year increase in general fund expenses. So. What you're seeing here with this sub 2% increase is definitely. Caused by the budgeting direction that, that we were given this year and, and the budgeting decisions that the department has made.
Correct, because that helped stave off larger increases because we either held other costs the same or decreased them. So. That's kind of the end result, you know, where did the budget end up? Let's look a little bit about how we, how we got there. First, by looking at where we are in 2020 and the projections through the end of the year. So. You know, we've talked periodically since COVID became a factor for us on, on. What costs were coming about because of COVID and how, how were we dealing with that? And so we were able to really keep the impacts of COVID-19 on the 2020 budget. Pretty minimal wherever we could. We instituted a hiring freeze, which primarily affected seasonal workers and summer help. And then the departments. Became conservative with their spending and just, you know, looking at. The things that were in the budget and, you know, what was really needed, what could maybe be saved, which helped a lot. We received the routes to recovery grant and that's really covering all of our extra COVID-19 costs. It does end on November 6th. So any P P E or equipment that we need or. You know, other, other COVID costs after that date. As of yet, there's no additional funding available to us, but. We're trying to take advantage of as much of that as we can by the November 6th date. And then we also were the recipient of a Wisconsin Election Commission Cares Grant and also a private grant that Caitlin. Applied for and we were awarded to help offset some of the election costs. So we're in pretty good shape in terms of 2020. So when we look at how we're going to end the year. We're going to have just a slight increase in our fund balance. So I consider this to be pretty close to breaking even in the general fund. But that's really good considering that we had budgeted for a decrease of about 560,000. We were going to use some fund balance reserves. Last, you know, in, in the current year when we adopted our budget last year and we aren't having to tap into those. So. For our usual way of budgeting, we're very conservative on our revenues and we. You know, some we don't even budget for at all, like the, the credit card rebate here. We just, you know, because that program, you know, could end. We don't want to be caught without a revenue source that we're counting on. So we tend to. Be very conservative with some of these revenues. On this under budgeted and unbudgeted aids, a lot of that, you know, at least 150,000 of that is the routes to recovery. So we clearly were not expecting that when we adopted our budget. Building permit revenue, we're still seeing that we will be over budget. Again, we, we budget that pretty conservatively and, and our. Things like single-family homes are, are pretty steady with where they were last year. So we have a little increase there. Our investment income, we were very lucky. So we have a little uh increase there. Our investment income, we were very lucky. Um, a couple of years ago, when we did our banking uh proposal and we locked in at a one point seven five percent. Interest rate, um which we're still, um, you know, in the kind of in the middle of our contract there. And so that. Has really helped us where other municipalities maybe um are are getting a lot lower rate, um but we don't budget. All of that income, so we have kind of a bonus for that. And then we have some other donations and miscellaneous that accounts for that. Um, some of these are. Wanna boom donations, uh, most of our donors were generous enough to. Uh, say that they would just carry their donation over into the next year, even though wanna boom um was canceled. Um, so we will hang on to those and they will um go towards next year's celebration. On the expenditure side, uh, we ended up being under budget. Uh, we have a couple areas. Um, that made up a a pretty good majority of that. Uh, the library. Ended up being under budget, and this was several factors here. Um, the library was closed for a portion of time. Um, and um, you know, operated and is still under operating under a reduced. Reduced programs and things of that nature. Um, and then some of the building maintenance costs um from either. You know, both being closed and and not knowing exactly how to budget um for a full year of operations in terms of utilities and things. We had some savings there. Uh, the public safety, um, we ended up being under budget again for several reasons. We were um not able to use as many part-time officers as we sometimes do due to COVID nineteen. Either they were restricted, um, or we had one uh part-time officer move out of the area and we could not. Uh, use that part-time. Person, so we had um a lot of that budget left over. And then also, um, we had a number of retirements. Um, and so we had budgeted quite a bit of overlap in terms of training and. Getting the new person up to speed, and we didn't need all of that because um a lot of our promotions were. Internal and we already had the person, you know, their salary was budgeted. And so while they were being trained, they were still being paid. You know, as their um previous um. Position, so we saved a lot of money that way. And at the end of twenty twenty, I'm projecting that we're our undes or unassigned fund balance is going to be. At twenty-eight percent or maybe a little higher than that. When we uh take all this into account.
It'd be, it'd be quick, it'd be easy to quickly click past this slide. Um, you know, accept the report and not think much, think much about it, but uh honestly, this this is really quite impressive. When we had budgeted five hundred and sixty thousand dollar use of of fun of. Uh, decrease in fund balance, ending up going up fifty grand. And it's 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 not for it's. That that takes a lot. Uh, it's a combination of the decisions you and the departments and Renee made. A year ago with a very responsible budgeting approach. And then it also comes with uh looking down the list of the department heads on my screen here. It comes from the extremely responsible work that they do all year long. So I just don't want to sneak past this and not really call it out as being something we should be um very pleased with.
Yes, thank you, Todd. Um, so now some other significant items uh to note for twenty twenty-one. So our growth rate, we did increase our equalized value by three point eight three percent. And. That directly affects our debt capacity, um, and the the amount of debt that we can borrow. But when we look at the growth rate, um, we have a little chart at the bottom, so um three point eight three percent. Um, sounds pretty good, but then when we look at the rate of our growth over the the four years prior. Um, it's actually extremely low. You know, even half of what we were back in twenty sixteen in terms of the rate of growth. So we'd um. So we've been relying on our growth really to help, um, you know, add add some of these costs. That now we don't have as much uh growth to absorb. Um, some of those increases. Um, our allowable levy increase uh based on the net new construction is two point six seven one percent. Um, last year we were uh just over four percent. So that net new construction number is also. Um, going down, meaning that um. We would not be able to increase our levy by as much if we so chose to do so. Um, some other significant items that um have gone into this twenty twenty-one budget that. Contribute to some of the, you know, the increase in the general fund and other funds. Um, our health insurance program, so uh we uh received uh maybe a month or two ago. Our premium increase, which was eight and a half percent based on our experience. And that was actually all the way up to the cap that had been negotiated. So um. Luckily, we had that cap, otherwise I do think that it might have been even higher than that. Um, so we had that to deal with. Um, but we did keep our health savings account uh contribution rates the same. Which is five thousand dollars for a family plan and twenty-five hundred for a single plan. Um, so that helps um temper that a little bit. So overall, we see about a six percent in uh budget impact. Just for health insurance. Um EMS, um, you can see our total twenty twenty-one share there is just over three hundred thousand. We make up about sixty-five percent of the budget, uh, which is based on population. And our increase was just about forty-seven thousand or a seventeen percent increase. You know, they had a five-year plan in place, and this um was a part of that. Um, and some of it did have to do with our population increase that Todd mentioned earlier. Uh, we did get a little bit bigger share of the pie. For fire, um, you can see our twenty twenty-one share is uh six hundred and fourteen thousand. Uh, for fire, which is based on um value, property values, we're just about seventy-two percent of the fire budget. And we saw uh just about a two percent increase or eleven thousand dollars uh added to our budget. Um, I will say for fire, um, you know, we had talked about, I believe it was at our August meeting, the. Engine two that they were going to um purchase or were looking to purchase and, you know, we talked about. Should the village borrow with the district borrow? So the district ended up borrowing. Um, though we still have the option to prepay our share if we want to, if we want to do our own borrowing or use fund balance or something. Um, but this increase does already take into account um the principal and interest for the first year of the borrowing. So at this point, I'm not necessarily seeing a need of as to why we would borrow and prepay our share. Um, because the the district was able to keep the increase um to a a pretty um minimal amount. And so, you know, it's within our levy limits and all those kinds of things that I was worried about before. So. That's a positive um within their budget. Uh, we did see a small. Yep.
Renee, I wonder if we could um pause here. I I don't think we've often had Scott and um. Dave uh Fire Chief and EMS Director on with us during our budget discussions. Um, I just wonder if is there, if there's any context to their budgets that they wanted to share with the full board at this time? Because that we're going to shift into the the regular village departments then after this. Is that okay?
Good for me if they have anything they want to share.
Oh, yeah, Todd, this is Scott. I guess I can uh, I can chime in first. So Renee is correct in that last year we implemented a five-year plan that saw us um. Not only taking a step up in service level to the paramedic level, but also saw us bring on three additional staff members. Um. With that, we implemented a five-year financial plan that actually has us using some of our reserves. To be able to keep the taxes down as much as possible to create the funding for it. Um. So we actually are still using approximately two hundred thousand dollars this year out of reserves. To help um offset some of those costs that we do have going into next year. So we will see a little bit of increase yet over the next couple of years as we move forward. One thing I did want to clarify. Excuse me with this um, with this number is that it's the sixty-five point three nine percent of the taxed. Um EMS budget, so we actually operate roughly on about sixty percent or so of our budget. Is through revenue generated through the um, the services that we provide. Um, so the village does pay the sixty-five point three three nine percent of our budget. But that's the portion of the budget that's actually assessed out to municipalities. Um, the rest, like I said, is is brought in by run revenue. Always, that's really all I have. Great job, Renee. Thank you.
Good clarification there, Scott. I didn't mention that part about the tax taxed share.
If fire really doesn't have, excuse me, much of anything to add, um, we just tried to keep the budget as. As minimal as as possible as far as increases. The new engine is uh, is on the way. It's not going to be seen for probably another. Well, the the build on it's anywhere is from twelve and a half to thirteen and a half months. So sometime. Hopefully mid next year we'll see that uh, or I should say mid in a year from now, see that new engine. And it is replacing a a truck that will be in excess of thirty years old when it, when the new one arrives. So. It is due and uh much appreciated, so thank you.
Okay. Um, appreciate it. Uh, any questions from board members before, well, there, there goes Dave. No, I know you're in the background, Dave. Um, any questions for them while they're still here?
I have one. I know it's, I mean, we Scott talks about, I mean, in the sustainability is my uh. Issue with the EMS as I know we have a a good percent of it comes out of the. Uh, the billings, which is is a great thing, but our long term, as I see it, is that. We are starting to caught, I mean, we we went from, we're going from a volunteer organization to more of a paid staff as. No matter which path we take to get there, and I I guess I'm. As I see it over time, is this something that the village should look at as incorporating into its own? Structure, or is this something that's better for us to keep separate? Um, and I I guess I'm looking, is there a way to study it for what's best for our citizens in the long run is? And I'm leaving it open.
So I understand, Bill, your, so your question is about the notion of making EMS actually a village department.
Correct. And I I know there's. Historically, it's forever been a, it was a fantastic, it still is a fantastic organization. It's forever been a vol, basically, it's going, shifting from a. Volunteer-run organization and and everything and then to a progressively professional paramedic. Run uh program, and we have become a huge percent of the. Uh, and not that Scott's that wrong, it's the sixty percent comes in in revenue, but it's becoming a progressively large. Share plus, like I said, we're in, we're still in a deficit, so that's somewhere in the long run that cost has to be come up. And I I think as far as budgeting and HR and all the, and some of the duplications that we share with the EMS. We may at some point want to consider evaluating whether it's better for us to be. Have them join our system or uh join their department as a department in the village, correct?
Uh, well, I guess I would, I mean, that that's a very big question. Uh, it is also certainly a significant. Uh, uh, process. Uh, I guess what I would offer is to the village board. Um, to the extent that you want to discuss that, um, that may be worth putting on a future board agenda as its own topic. Um, so so we can dive into that and perhaps even Bill. As our rep at the commission. That might be worth exploring uh simultaneously with your commission. But but I would probably ask the village board as to whether, and we can do that ended tonight, or. As we go through the process here, whether that's something they like evaluated, and we would, we would put that on a future agenda specifically.
I'll just pipe in quick on that. I I I would agree um with Bill and his assessment. But I think it's very important that um the partners that we have within the EMS are included and and have. And we make sure that within those discussions that regardless of whichever way we were to go with this. That they are still going to be have service available within whatever system we've created um for their communities. I I don't think it's something that we would just pull apart and um leave them high and dry. I mean, that's that's important and within this this conversation. Everybody, all the communities that have been involved have been uh participating, and I think what Bill is getting at is. Our portion is significantly higher and we can be a more effective service unit, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bill. Effective service unit for our citizens and the other citizens if we were to bring this in-house. Um, as well as as put it under our our guys, which we have quite a few things that we're duplicating at this point. Bill, did I say that right?
Yeah, I I apologize if I didn't include the other uh segments, because I do think that's, it's basically about efficiency. I believe, and and obviously we have great partners in our communities around us, and uh they obviously would need to be. Uh, a part of this, but it's uh, it's just something that's seems to be changing under our feet. So, thanks, Chris.
I would, I would just recommend probably, you know, we're having a little bit of discussion tonight. This is something for a future, a future meeting. Maybe our next meeting, we can talk about this a little more in depth. Um. I I'd say just leave it at that at this point.
Well, that that would help because staff could then, I mean, we could share information about. There's a lot of things behind that about what does that mean? What what uh? Different, the different angles that have to be considered. So staff could work to have more information to help inform the board. On whether to explore that more deeply.
And lastly, I'd just point out, I I'm not trying to slight our volunteers. Our volunteers are amazing and do just a fantastic job for and have forever. Um, in all these years, and we're not trying to do anything like that. I mean, we're not trying to slight our volunteers. I think we're just upgrading and we're growing to a point where we need the service to to evolve a little bit from a financial reasons too.
Well, Bill, Bill, you're not, are you suggesting that volunteers uh are no longer, would no longer be a component?
The opposite.
Yeah, okay.
That'll tell you too, it's a, they're a huge part of the whole setup. I'm just looking at it, it's beca, as the. When the volunteers are running it and they were the, the source of the, the structure, it was, it's. It was one thing, and now when I do believe that will become a funded uh system with the, you know, paramedics and everything. I I certainly would hope the volunteers would be allowed to stay in and become part of this as time goes, but it is uh changed over time. In my, in my five, I think I've been there, Scott, five years or four years now, and it's a dramatic switch over. Last five years as far as where our funding's come from.
Okay, so I I just wanted to protect that and make sure that the volunteers are not in any way feeling slighted in any way, shape or form. Especially since I I I know for sure we have two formers, or well, Phil's a former, and I know Nyla's husband's been very involved with. EMS for many, many years. So um, it's a good discussion that we'll have at our next meeting. Okay. Moving forward.
Okay, um, so I will just finish up this slide quick. Um, in terms of some significant items going into the twenty twenty-one budget, we did have a um. A small decrease in our transportation aids, um, really as a result of um. Doing less roadwork um in twenty nineteen, uh, it's kind of a formula with a rolling average. And we had done a significant amount of TIF work in addition to our normal, normal roadwork. You know, specifically Highway Q and Century Avenue, they're still in our um, in our six-year rolling formula. But um, in twenty nineteen, we didn't do any of that TIF work, and it was just our own million-dollar. Street work, so our aides did go down a little bit there. And then we are seeing. And then we are seeing an increase in principal and interest payments, uh, for the 2021 budget of about 177,000. So you may recall, we did, uh, two borrowings in 2020. The 2020A borrowing was primarily for streets and parks. And then we did a state trust fund loan borrowing for the remainder of the library costs. Um, and so this is kind of a breakdown of, um, the percentages there on how much this, um, new principal and interest, uh, is broken out toward. A- as far as the library, state trust fund loan go, state trust fund loan goes. Um, you may recall that we were hoping by now to maybe have sold one of our buildings, either the current village hall or the former library. Um, and so that was going to be a direct, um, pay down of that debt. And so, um, at, at this point, uh, due to COVID and um, all, all that's been happening this year, um, the, there's been no progress on that. So we have, um, the full amount of the principal and interest, budget, well, the 2021 piece of that budgeted.
And I would just add their, their progress has occurred in terms of making an initial run at marketing the building, which is exactly when COVID hit, as well as doing, um, interior design evaluation of renovation of the old village hall and gaining cost estimates on that. So work has been laid. Um, we have hit the wrong time, uh, in the economy to sell anything like a, a potentially commercial building for that matter. So that's where that stands.
Thanks. Uh, moving on, um, so personnel expenses, um, as has always been the case, I'm sure. Um, staffing accounts for a huge part of our budget, 59% of the general fund and then 34% of the total budget across all funds. Um, and so, you know, that's the biggest, um, the biggest contributor to any increases in our, in our budgeted expenses. Um, but, uh, as we spoke about earlier, we were able to maintain the step adjustments per the compensation strategy that amounts to about 36,000 or so of increases. And then, um, we have the cost of living adjustment of 2% going into effect on January 1st, 2021. And, uh, across all staff, that's close to $99,000 of an increase. And, you know, just for reference, a 0.5% up or down, uh, changes the levy about 28% or 28,000 up or down. And then we already talked about the health insurance increase of about 73,000. So this year we were not going to have the department heads speak on this. So I think Todd is going to go through, um, the individual department items of note.
But they're all, they are all here and they are all willing to take questions, um, or address concerns that any of you might have. So, um, they're, they're here and certainly there's, there's no gag order in effect. We, it is really important for us to hear from them. I, in particular, because financially, this is an unremarkable budget. If you kind of talk about service ads or, um, you know, spectacular changes. But in that it's not a remarkable financial budget, it, it makes it a remarkable act of budgeting, quite honestly. Because, um, the departments had to make do with what they had and get creative in doing that. So, um, they, they're, they are definitely appreciative in the work that they do along with their staff. So I'll run through, these are just, just a few items that the department has, you know, maybe highlighted as the most notable of all items. Um, as for the village boards work, um, we're going to look to continue our strategic planning efforts, which quite honestly, went, uh, went on the sideline, uh, due to the new strategic requirements of our organization as of late. Uh, but we're going to continue that work that we started last year. Uh, in administration, we're definitely committed to our work with our staff and our organizational color, especially our organizational culture, especially in regards to diversity, training and initiatives. The clerks department, uh, has budgeted a change in staffing, but it's a, a combined situation. We, we had two, um, and I might need, Caitlin, you might have to help me correct this if I get it wrong, but we had two commu-, uh, citizen service representatives, uh, who worked, uh, who work at village hall. One retired left employment recently. We're left with one and that particular employee is willing to take on additional hours. Uh, not going full-time, uh, but adding hours to their current schedule. If I'm correct, this comes out almost as a wash, if not a slight decrease in cost. Um, Caitlin, maybe you can correct me specifically on that.
Yep. So Todd is correct. Um, we're proposing in the 2021 budget to combine the two part-time, um, citizen service representatives who previously were working both under 1,200 hours a year into one position at 75%. Um, so I, there was a memo included in the packet that outlined all of this, but, um, I was able to find savings in both the election budget, budget and the customer, the clerk's budget to make this, um, this position, uh, this change okay with the, within the current budget constraints. But, um, when you combine the two positions, um, and then add the prorated benefits for the employee, we were able to find enough savings in, in those two budgets to cover the costs.
And on top of that, um, the employ- uh, employee who's going 70, 75% is Lynn Richardson and she's, she's been a great, uh, member of our team. We're excited to keep her here and engaged with us. And we've, we've seen turnover in the CSR position for years because the, well, part-time positions like that tend to have that sort of, uh, phenomenon as, as regularity.
Yep. I, as I all end in the, in the memo to the board, I looked it up and the average tenure of someone in this position was less, was just about a year and Lynn has been with us for four years. So she's been our constant. And, uh, her partner has been, partner in the position has been, has been constantly revolving. So, um, I'm looking forward to and clerk and Lori and I are looking forward to adding some hours to Lynn.
Okay. Good. And good job doing that with, uh, uh, net reduction. Police department, uh, there's a wellness program with, uh, special attention to mental health that is going to be continuing um, as a priority for the department. I'm going to get through all these and then, uh, we'll spend time going back to see if you have dr- questions for specific departments. Engineering and, uh, road rehab remains a priority as identified by the village, villages budget and borrowing. Public works and parks, some reallocation for equip, uh, toward equipment maintenance and repair to extend the life of our equipment. Uh, the library is going to be, uh, has put on, on, uh, some of the hours on hold, but they are planning to implement that in the coming year. And economic development, we've got to focus on our 150th anniversary, anniversary celebration. We're going to be spending time on that. The senior is seeing an increase, uh, in the, the county funding to over a hundred thousand dollars annually. Um, that, that threshold that they crossed, uh, requires additional auditing. So that expense is new. And then in community services and Sumic Dade's department, they're looking to expand some programming and facilitation of planning for potential aquatics, um, or, uh, pool facilities that had been put on hold due to the pandemic. So, uh, that's some activities in our departments, uh, not listed here, but in attendance is the judge and I saw Jody, I don't see Jody any longer, but, uh, Judge Raffel is on, is in and, um, unremarkable, I guess is the word to say, no major changes in the court budget unless I'm, uh, misinterpreting your budget, judge. But I don't think there's anything particular to note that is, is new or different. And Judge, I wasn't saying that you're unremarkable.
I appreciate that, Todd.
Is there any particular priority you'd want to share? Cause I didn't, I didn't identify any here for you.
Uh, no, we're just kind of getting into the swing of things as far as conducting all of our court hearings over Zoom, which presents various challenges as far as trying to get in touch with, uh, defendants and so forth. But, uh, we're, we're, we're getting used to it and it's actually working out quite well as far as the, the biggest benefit of the municipal court is to give people access to the court. And actually having these hearings over Zoom is allowing people that are as far away as, you know, out of state, they can appear for their case now because it's a resume. So, uh, but no, otherwise, uh, nothing remarkable budget-wise.
Okay. Thanks. This, but this one slide is by no means, uh, sufficient enough to tell the story of the work of our department. So again, uh, our managers are all here. Uh, are there any, uh, do you care to pose any questions to them?
Board members, any questions? Please raise your hand. Hey Todd, where, where's our budget coming from for the 150th anniversary for, for village? What, what do we have set aside for that?
Um, there is a, a portion of the budget that I reallocated from other purposes for the 150th. It's not a large number by any means. I, I expect that the way we're running the 150th is essentially harnessing all the other groups and organizations in our community that want to celebrate along with us. So, uh, for example, the Rotary Club is kicking off a, a process to do a, a branding logo design contest and they're funding that. So they're going to take on that initiative and we're collaborating with all, with all of those organizations. And I see the effort being spread in addition to the financial effort being spread. I also think that there'll be significant opportunity for corporate support and involvement. That's the type, this is the type of thing that especially long time wannakey corporations like to get excited about. So we'll be working with them to support different events and festi- festivities. But Renee, do you, do you happen to have the exact number that I allocated for?
Yes, um, I just pulled it up, um, and there is $25,000 in the budget, again, reallocated from other, um, part in economic development. So 25,000.
Which I think is probably going to spend most of its time doing marketing of the variety of activities and events that are being coordinated by the different groups. So if we can serve as sort of this, this, uh, um, sort of one-stop shop for all information, we'll, we'll be coordinating that sort of marketing to the community.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions for any other department heads? Okay, seeing none, we can move on.
We're not going to place dump Kevin even. That's always a fun one each year.
All right, we'll move on. Um, thank you, Todd, for this, um, that discussion there. Um, so now we're going to talk a little bit about, um, some of the other tools that we use to achieve the 0% uh, increase in the assessed tax rate. Uh, so first just a refresher on our, uh, policy. Um, we have a policy to maintain the general fund unassigned fund balance between 20% and 25% of the next year's operating expenditure budget. And so when you look back at the most, uh, few most recent years, um, we've been well over our policy. And, uh, and you know, I'm still predicting that we will be over our policy for 2020. Um, we have, so it, you know, it dipped down between 18 and 19, um, but we have made some conscious efforts to, um, use that fund balance for specific reasons. And so, you know, it was more of a conscious effort to, to start to bring it down a little bit. Um, but luckily we do have a nice cushion, um, that is helping us through, uh, the pandemic. Um, so we do plan to use, uh, you know, a fairly high amount of fund balance, uh, in this 2021 budget to, to get to where we want it to be. Um, so the pay-go enhancements, um, we've been doing this for several years. Uh, last year, uh, the pay-go enhancement was about 243,000. So we're increasing that. And what that really means is instead of, um, funding our pay-go's fully through tax levied amounts. Uh, we are using some fund balance to supplement that and, uh, keep the tax, taxes down. Um, so we will continue to do that and actually increase it a little bit. Um, the second bullet there is, uh, using some of our carryovers. Um, specifically this one is for retirement. So you may recall last year around this time, uh, we made the decision to fully fund the, um, liability for the sick leave conversion. So, um, there's certain employees, um, that have typically been here since prior to 2013. And when they retire, they're able to convert their unused sick leave and use it for, uh, either paying health insurance premiums or, uh, whatever they want on the healthcare side. We, we deposit amounts into an HRA for them, a health. I think it's health retirement account. Can't remember what the letters stand for, an HRA. Um, and so, you know, we had that fully funded. So now as we have retirees, we will spend that down. So, um, this 110,000 is, is going to be used to fund the HRA accounts of, I believe it's five retirees that we still have, uh, that still have balances, um, to, to use. Um, and then we have 277,000 of, um, use of fund balance that's strictly considered property tax relief. So there's no specific, um, you know, expenses attached to this. This is just to bring down the levy. Um, so last year, we did, uh, also have some property tax relief. It was about 111,000. So this is a little more than double that, um, for this budget. So, but even with all of this, um, I'm still projecting our fund balance for 2020 and 2021 to be over our policy at, uh, 28% and 26% respectively there. So again, having our strong year in 2020 is also helping, um, you know, beef up our fund balance so that we can use, use it for this purpose. Um, in a couple of slides, we'll, we'll talk a little bit of more about this. But I, I did project out even beyond 2021, I projected out the, the four years after that. Um, and even if we have to use a fair amount of fund balance in future years, I still don't see us dipping below say 23 or 24% of in our policy. So, um, while these numbers seem large, I do believe that they are still, um, responsible in, in keeping with our policies. Oops. Uh, another area where we, um, have been systematically using some fund balance is, um, in servicing the village center debt. So you may recall that we get, um, impact fees, um, from that date way back to when we built the village center. Uh, we can continue to collect those impact fees until they pay off, um, the, you know, required portion of the debt on the village center. And so, um, we only have a few years left of the debt. Um, so we're using some of that fund balance to pay it. And then we will continue to collect impact fees until we've, uh, reached the maximum amount that we can, um, collect under the impact fee ordinance. So, um, that will continue, but we tried to manage it so that we would use what we had on hand by the time the debt is paid off. So this is where I wanted to come back to just talking a little bit more about, um, the use of fund balance and just some cautions to keep in mind. Um, as I said, this is a fairly high level, uh, use of fund balance, uh, for, is primarily in the property tax relief area. Um, and that's certainly not sustainable over the long term. I feel like with our balances, the way they are and, and projecting out, you know, where our fund balance is going to be, uh, we, we certainly can use fund balance for this purpose for, you know, at least another year or two at a pretty high level. But it, it's not something we can keep doing year after year, um, because again, we're using fund balance really to kind of, uh, offset operating costs. And, uh, the second bullet there, um, you know, typically we try to limit use of fund balance to one-time expenditures, um, such as, you know, a particular capital project or something like that. So, while I think it's, um, doable in the near term and, you know, possibly for the next couple of years to use some fund balance for this purpose. Again, if Again, if the recession and and current conditions continue longer than a couple of years, you know, we'd actually have to look at you know, where we could either cut costs or change change our capital spending, things of that nature to help us with our budget. Then I did note that Moody's, which is our rating agency, they would not like to see us dip below our policy and it could potentially affect our rating if we drop below the 20% of our of our policy.
Hey, Renee, to interrupt you there, with Moody's, can you maybe share with the board and the public? When you say unfavorably for for communities our size, what is our Moody's ranking currently?
We are a AA2 rating, which the highest rating is a in the triple A's. That is generally reserved for the very largest of governments. The AA2 rating is considered for a village of our size to be a very strong rating. And what that does for us is that when we do borrow, we can get a better rate than if if our rating rating goes down, it usually means your interest rates that you have to pay go up. So that's one of the reasons we like to keep that really strong.
Thank you.
The final bullet on there. It's not really a caution. It didn't really fit anywhere else, but we do have three tip districts that will be closing over the next few years. And that will help because we'll get their value added back to the tax rolls. And then the the budget and the tax levy gets spread over more value. It helps with the tax rate. Any questions there? Because that's the biggest. I guess the the biggest piece of the bu- budget puzzle as to how we were able to get to that 0% is, you know, a fairly strategic use of fund balance, but yet higher levels than we have been in the past.
Okay, questions from board members? Please raise your hand. Bill, I see yours up.
So the the benefit, I guess I'm confused about the benefit of paying down the pay go if we're gonna edge into being in a dangerous area for our bond ratings. So I I missed it, maybe. Sorry.
So we're not so what we're we're using fund balance to supplement. So for example, we our our goal is to do $2 million of street work each year. So that's from a combination of borrowing of about a million dollars and a million dollars of pay go funding. And so in the past, that million dollars of pay go was was fully levied. So what we're doing here is instead of levying the full million dollars, we are using some of this fund balance, levying less and using some fund balance to help supplement to get us up to the million dollar level. So if we did not do this, we would either have to raise our levy to keep the project levels the same, or we would have to reduce the number of projects. So by doing this, we're using fund balance that we do have a bit of an excess of to help keep the the projects the same, but not levy as much.
So what would the cost be if we if our rating does drop? If, I mean, I'm not saying it would, but if we if we went, our reserves went low, do you have an idea? I mean, is it a big difference in insurance than the interest rates or?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I mean, there's a lot of factors in the rating process, and so we have other factors that are in our favor that, you know, kind of help offset that a little bit. So but just one thing that they do look at very carefully is how much reserve funds that you have on hand when they're doing the rating. So you know, I can see if if our bond consultants would have an idea of interest rates if our rating changed. I can look into that.
Bill, one of our conversations at the finance was in regards to this. So our policy is 20 to 25%. After this, we're going to be at 28 and 26. So we're actually still above our self imposed policy. Even though we are using this, I think the important thing in understanding is that when using these funds, we're not going down to that 20% area, as Renee mentioned earlier, even going out several years and using fund balance. The lowest she's forecasting it to get to is 23 or 24%. So we're not in jeopardy of going down below 20%, which is where they would really start to look unfavorably at us potentially for this particular thing. Just like any of our credit, they're looking at a lot of different things. This is just one area. But because we're breaking one of our own policies, potentially if we went under 20, that would they would view that negatively. Because we're stating that.
The policy also suggests, though, that we shouldn't be over 25. 2025 isn't telling us what the floor should be. It's telling the parameters that we should be within. So and and I mean, we can talk a lot about the philosophy of why, but that that's sort of the way to look at what 25 means.
So I'm sure you guys talked about, but is there any? I see some risk for collections. I mean, property tax collections being different next year. Is that calculated in also already?
Well, our our only risk in terms of property tax collection, so real estate taxes, so your taxes on your home or a piece of real estate. That, no matter if somebody goes delinquent and they don't pay, the county makes us whole typically by the end of August. So it could be a delay in collecting our funds, but we receive our real estate taxes no matter what. The the where we have a small risk, and it's it's certainly much, much smaller dollars, is with personal property. So if personal property is the tax on the property within a business. So even if you're renting your space, but you have equipment that you're using for your business, it it is taxed. And so if people go delinquent on their personal property, that stays with the village and we work to collect that. We have to go to you know, we take people to collection agencies and things like that to get that money. That's a little more difficult for us to collect. But right now, we probably have an outstanding balance of a few thousand dollars. It's not big dollars. So but in terms of our our biggest revenue source of the real estate taxes, there's e- even though I'm sure delinquencies will be higher. You know, the county has to absorb that, but then they also get to charge interest and penalties on that. That's kind of the benefit that they get, or they could eventually foreclose on the property. So I I don't see much risk in terms of collections on that.
But that's what I guess I didn't know. That makes me feel better. Thanks.
Anything else before we just move on to the last couple of slides? Okay, I did want to talk a little bit about the compliance with our debt policies. You know, we kind of touch on these specifically, the first one every year. But our policy is that we remain below 50% of the state imposed debt limit, which is 5% of our total equalized property value. So we have a more stringent policy than what the state would allow us to borrow. And so we're going to be at 34, just over 34% at the end of 2020. And that's down just a a hair from last year. So we're well below our budget or our policy there in terms of our debt limit. And you may recall, those of you who have been on the board or followed it, you know, there was a time when we were getting closer to that number when we were working on the building the library. But again, our strong equalized value growth of the past several years has helped bring that number up. And so now we're quite a bit below our our policy. We also have a policy that we want to keep the debt costs below 30% of our total village expenditures. And again, we're just about 19% there. And so the reason that's important is because you don't want to be paying out into the future, you know, a huge amount of your expenditures going towards things that you've already purchased or projects you've already done. You want to keep most of your expenditures, you know, within the current cycle of of what you need them for, not over borrowing for things. And then we have a policy to keep our equalized tax rate for debt below $2.25 per thousand, and we're only at 1.35, again, down a little bit from last year. So in terms of our debt policies, we're still very strong there. I I've included this slide again. This is the pretty much the exact same slide as last year. But you may recall with our capital improvement plan, we we have a two year cycle for doing borrowings. So we borrowed in early 2020, and that's for the 2020 budget and the 2021 capital budget. So at the very bottom line there is, you know, we, well, I guess I can run down it. We have all of our our capital projects and then the funding sources that help pay for those, including some impact fees and then the pay goes that we were talking about earlier. And then the Village Center has their own reserve. And then that left us with how much debt would we need to borrow to complete all those projects? And so that borrowing has already taken place. This is a breakdown of of how the borrowed money will be spent. So for 2021, a million of that is going towards the street work. And then we have part of the North Ridge Park Shelter is funded through debt, and the other part is funded through impact fees. And then we have some tennis court work that was borrowed for. Oh, and the only other thing I was going to say on the street improvement. So it it's in our in our long term capital plan that we will hopefully be able to rely less on borrowing over the course of a number of years and be able to beef up our pay go amounts, either the, you know, the levied amounts. But so we did it a little bit this year, and that will continue. But with with COVID and and this budget, you know, we're we're not going to be able to do that maybe as dramatically as we hoped, but over time, we should be able to rely less on borrowing for streets. This is a slide that we updated again for the 2019 tax rates that really shows where Wanakey ranks within Dane County with the cities and villages in Dane County. And, you know, we have it ordered by equalized tax rate because that's kind of the one that's more comparable from city and village to each other. So Wanakey has dropped again now two spots in terms of our our tax rate. So our our tax rate is again, lower than you know, we're now we're probably in the low lowest 25% in the county in terms of our our tax rate. Just wanted to say thank you to my staff, all the department heads and Todd and the administrative staff and all the management team for all their help, pulling this all together and and to Chris as well for his guidance and input along the way. And so tonight, you know, if you have more questions or if you have, you know, other things that you want me to look into or 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 changes to be made, this is the time that we can discuss any of that.
Okay, board members, I'm I'm going to comment first. I don't usually comment firstly, as you know, I like to let you guys go. But since I was giving some direction to staff and and how this was playing out as well as to our staff that's listening tonight, the important thing to understand in in my thoughts with this is that COVID had come, COVID was here. Budgets were going to be uncertain. This year's budget isn't as uncertain as probably 2022's is going to be for sure with with regards to the county state, our state revenue sharing that we're going to be receiving, that a lot of that comes from sales taxes and other things which they've already said are going to be down substantially. So we're going to probably have that impact in 2022. Not so much here in 2021, probably. But I was also looking at, you know, the 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 people in our community and knowing all the things that are happening within one being our schools and what our schools are confronted with with their budgets right now. As you saw, their their percentage of the tax rate is is substantial. As is ours. I'm I'm not trying to diminish what ours is, but we have that to to take into play. We also have to look at what are our revenues going to look like moving forward if we don't have our full capacities for Village Center, which is one of our only real revenue driving sources in the community? And then for our families and our homeowners, as as Dr. Random was was kind of alluding to, you know, the are we going to have a lot of people in trouble potentially with their mortgages and so on and so forth? And I felt it was important for us to hold the line the best that we possibly could for those families. And as we've seen with COVID, it's not the wealthy that are necessarily having a difficult time with this. It is our our poor and middle class, for that matter, that are struggling more. So to me, it was important to keep that zero, to keep that number there that we don't have an increase this year. And, you know, my compliments to the staff for for putting in the time, efforts and and resources, frankly, to make sure that they were able to get to those numbers. I'm I'm proud of them for doing that. While seeing those things, I realize as as and we talked about this at finance, Gary brought this up and as well as Kristen, we're growing and we've grown in the last year considerably. And as you saw over the last five years, we've we've had substantial growth and Todd pointed out with our population number, it sounds like about 550 new residents. Is that about right, Todd? Somewhere right in that area, which is is significant. And as we have those, we're going to have increasing pressures on our Public Works Department specifically, and then our police. And I pointed out, if there was an area that I would 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 give in more with this, it would be the police, because I view our jobs as we would need to protect the the community, make sure we have a safe community, and and that's out there for everyone. So if we needed to add a police officer, that would be something that 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 I could still consider into this to make sure safety of our community is 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 our number one priority, in my opinion. That goes with COVID too. I mean, how how we're reacting to COVID is the same thing. The Public Works, they're absolutely, if you think of the roads that we have, the additional the additional streets that we have to plow, take care of, just the the additional parks that we have. And and Gary, you can speak to this, and and Bill, I'm sure is on here, but, you know, just looking at our our trees and what needs to be removed as dead dead or or not good trees, you know, we have more than enough in more years probably that we'd have to take care of that as well as planting of new trees. You know, we want to get to that as well. But if we don't have the employees to take care of that, we just can't do those things. So to me, that's that's where my mind was within all of this. And then recognizing, how do we make sure? So, you know, the 2% COLA that we have in for our employees, our employees are taxed right now. They're dealing with all their roles, responsibilities in addition to COVID responsibilities that they have. And in in my opinion, I think they're doing just an unbelievably fantastic job with all of this. So that's that's where we came with with the 2%. And I think Todd was hot off the press tonight. I I think you said seven, seven different communities that five of the seven had a 2% increase for COLA and two had 0%. Is that correct, Todd?
I, I believe so. I'll double check those numbers while you're talking here.
So as, as others are looking at their budgets, so yes, I, I did direct staff to hold the budget as much as possible. But that's just mine. And this, that's what's great about this is this is what we see tonight and where we're at. I, I'm, again, I'm proud of how our staff has put this budget together. I want to make sure our staff is feeling appreciated and, and not unappreciated within this. I think that's important. I, I think we're accomplishing those things. I hope they understand that we're, we're trying to do those things. But again, we're going to have a couple of public hearings as well as time for us to have this discussion. So it's important that all of you weigh in and, and, and your feelings, and it may be completely different than mine. This is what the staff proposed based on what I gave them for some direction. So that said, comments?
And that, and that's correct, Chris. Seven, seven communities besides ours. Five are at two percent and two are at zero in their budget proposals.
So a show of hands, if you have comments to make. Phil Owens?
Yeah, I looked at this and I looked at the, I think it's a very realistic budget. I looked at anticipated revenues and they were very cautious. I looked at expenses and they were very realistic compared to previous expenses. So I think the, the budget is very conservative and very attainable. And it's a good job. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Any others? Please raise your hand. Kristin Rungy?
Yeah, I would also like to thank Renee and the staff and for all they do to keep us in good financial shape and to, you know, make sure that we're moving forward as a community. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into getting a budget to this point. It is a whole village, whole staff exercise. And I agree with Phil, this is, is a good-looking budget. It's achievable. It's conservative. I feel very confident in it. So thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Any of the others? We got Bill. Gary, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I had mentioned earlier in the finance meeting that, you know, I know the public works and the Parks guys, you know, they really take pride in the services, the quality of services we have in our community. And as our budgets get tighter, I'm always concerned that we may have to sacrifice some of that level of service. But they've done a great job with using technology and labor-saving ways to do things to keep that service level high. So we just need to support those folks when financially we get in a position that we can do that.
Thanks, Gary. Bill?
Thanks to Renee and I, I like, there's no meeting I'm not happy to see Renee at, to be honest. So bad for her, good for us. Thanks again, and her staff, obviously.
Erin and Nyla, either of you have any comments?
Just thank you, Renee and your department for all the work you've done and to all the village staff. They work very hard every day and I'm glad that they can get the pay increase that will, I hope they can get it that we're looking at because you know, it's kind of hard to work and not even be able to keep up with any additional costs that you're incurring in your family. So I'm, I'm all for them getting a, a raise.
Okay, thanks, Nyla. Erin, any comments?
Echo the thanks to everyone. Yeah, pulling off all of the guidance and obviously we have a lot of uncertainty ahead of us, but I think we're in a good position. So thank you to everyone involved.
Okay, I'll just echo that same thing. Everybody's comments are, are very appropriate. And I, I will say that as we go through this, I'd like all of you to think about what I talked about with police and with public work specifically. And knowing if you, as on the screen right now, you can see for every ten thousand dollars change in levy, you know, we're going to add about point one into the, our tax rate. So if we were to add two employees, we kind of guesstimated around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with income and benefits. So you can, you can figure it's going to be about, based on that point one. It's not that hard to math, but about one point five is where that comes to. I think that's right. Is what we'd be adding to that tax rate if we were to add two employees. So that's something that I, I'll, I'll put to you guys if, if we want to consider doing that or not at that time. But it might make sense. It might not. I, as I said, I'm not firm one way or another, but I do think the staff did an, a, amazing job at getting their, their costs in line and, and as Phil and I think it was Kristen that echoed it. It's very acceptable as far as the budget goes right now. So okay, Todd, anything that we have to do tonight? Do we need to vote or make a motion on this at this point?
So I did pull up one more slide. So the action that has to be taken tonight is, so, you know, we understand that this is the first draft of the budget, but I do need to make it available to the public and to publish the notice and set the public hearing. So even though, you know, we can still make changes. But at this point, this is the one that we would go with in terms of publishing in the paper and, and making it publicly available. So there is a recommended motion there to essentially direct me to, to do those things.
Okay, Nyla?
I move to direct staff to publish the notice as required by state statutes indicating the proposed budget is available for public review.
A second.
And schedule the public hearing for November sixteen?
Yes.
Thanks, Nyla. So we have a Nyla. You're good with, you're good with that addition I just made? Yes?
Yes.
And Kristen's good with it too. So we have a, a motion in a second. Any other comments? Okay, Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Rana?
Yes.
Chris Selner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Discuss and take action on proposed strand associates task order for engineering services related to the Meadowbrook Park parking lot. Stuart, are you taking this one? Since I see you on the screen there, go ahead.
You betcha. So the Parks Committee has been working for several months now. A conversation about how to manage an issue that we're having in Meadowbrook Park. You may remember that, that park hosts a tennis court, playground, beautiful walking path, two, two of our best baseball diamonds, and now most recently a new park shelter. And what we are finding is that we just simply do not have enough parking in that park to support the activities that occur there. Had several meetings, we've met several times with the neighbors in Meadowbrook Park. And what is before the board tonight is a task order with Strand and Associates to help us with two steps. The first is the planning and the implementation of some temporary parking stalls that will be installed next year, about twenty-two spots that will be constructed on either side of the entry drive to the park. They will not be paved with asphalt. They will be temporary stalls. We're looking to use millings from a street project to get those put in. And then the second part of this project is to help with the planning of the complete reconstruction of that parking lot. We previously had anticipated and budgeted for reconstruction in twenty twenty-three of the existing lot. And so this work will pave the temporary stalls that we're going to put in next year and the remainder of the parking lot, and then do a little bit more study about how we might be able to add some additional stalls on the north end of the parking lot. So two parts to the project. Phil is still on the line here as well, so he might be able to answer some questions or the Park Committee members could as well.
Chris, I could say that we met on site there several times and with the citizens in the area. And this is a beautiful park. And, and we think that what we're doing here will maintain the beauty of the park. It will have very little impact on the park, the grass, et cetera. It won't cause any more flooding. And it'll take a lot of heat off of wear and tear on our grassy surfaces and keep it nice and green down there. And give us a little time to look at our scheduling and see if we do have to take another step, how orderly to do it.
Okay, let's see, Gary, you're on Parks as well. Any other comments from you?
Yeah, I think we just looked at, this is the financially, the best way to handle this. It gives us some time to maybe reevaluate and see if we can meet the parking needs with this addition. And then we do the total reconstruct. I mean, financially, it's the best way for the village to look at it. And I think it'll solve our issues.
Perfect. Thank you. Board members, any questions from, go ahead, Nyla?
I'm curious, how much does a study like this cost?
The, the first part of this project is five thousand dollars and that is to help us just work through the planning and the specifications that we need to put in the temporary stalls next year. And then the second bit of funding is, I believe, twenty thousand dollars. And it's not not necessarily a study, but it's the design and the engineering of the construction work.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then we would look for a motion.
I would move that we approve Strand Associates Task Order for Engineering Services related to Meadowbrook Parking Lot.
Okay, motion by Phil Owens. Do we have a second? Second, second by Gary Hertzberg. Okay, any other comments or discussion? Raise your hands. Okay, seeing that, call the, call the order and roll call vote, Caitlin.
Bill Rana?
Yes.
Chris Selner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And number five, discuss and take action on racism, tolerance and equality in the Wanake community. Todd?
All right, I've got just a brief slideshow here just to show you what is happening, what's going on these days. All right. Okay. So the rise up training that you, you have been a part of will conclude on that didn't come out right, will conclude on October twenty-first. So we've got a special meeting scheduled this week. It should say five thirty. So we've, we're scheduled to have Betsy and Antonio join us again, making some continued progress on the discussion that we had on October seventh. As you know, we're proceeding with university year. And right now, we're in the process of scoping, scoping phase. We're in the process of assigning project leads for the seven different projects. And then the UW staff will be connecting with those leads to then scope out and flush out the projects. I do have confirmation that Westport is going to participate with us with the specific project regarding Native Nations involvement in our hundred and fiftieth celebration as part of Wannaboo. So Tom Wilson is going to be one of the leads for helping with that project. And then the school district is participation, is participating with a continuing learning or a K-12 Involve Learning Project where we'd engage students to assist with essentially a marketing campaign, a messaging campaign to tell the stories of inclusivity and social justice and racial equality throughout our community. So Randy Gutenberg has identified one of the staff members, mass media instructor, who's going to be part of that. And I also think, Chris, you know, we talked earlier, we're going to be involving Tim De Cora with the Native Nations project. He's a school staff member. The resolution that you passed at your last meeting is in the process of being translated to Spanish. I'm going to have that translation in my hands this Wednesday. With that, I'll publish both of those versions simultaneously. And then we'll print posters for our village facilities for posting. We've been engaged in partnerships with the Wanake Neighborhood Connection and across the community. Right now, WNC is helping a, a collection of organizations throughout our, our village put together a comprehensive social services directory. What has been noticed is that sort of the most populations that are in most significant areas of need are, are expressing that, that they're expressed. The concerns are rising as, as the pandemic continues, the economic impact, the mental health impact. And we're just seeing an impact on, on those populations. So what we didn't have is a really clear guide for everyone in the community on where they can go locally if they need help. And that's what this directory will do. It's circulating now through different organizations along with village departments to make sure we've got that accurate and complete, and we hope to be publishing that shortly. And then that partnership is also going to be doing some more community-wide education on topics of social justice and racial equity. That group has been meeting about monthly. And then the Wanta, Wanta Talk Diversity Facebook group has been active. I've been attending, and I know some of you, Kristen and Nyla, I saw you were on the meeting this past Sunday, but they have weekly Sunday meetings. I've been participating regularly to provide to provide sort of assistance to the extent that the village can. Definitely not looking to step in front and take a lead there, but more serve as an, and an ally in the work that that group is doing and a resource as needed. And that group is also going to be holding a peace walk event on November twenty-second. That'll involve Village Park and they're looking to work with the timing of the lighting of rotary, rotary lights, which I think that evening is the first lighting of the year. Is that right, Phil?
A Sunday before Thanksgiving, yes.
Okay, yeah, the twenty-second. And then as far as staff goes, we did establish for twenty twenty-one, an organizational performance goal that is on every, every evaluated employee's performance that they must participate in the diversity programming that will be coordinating as a village. And Caitlin and I have interviewed and are going to be getting a proposal from Percy Brown, who's a well-regarded, well-regarded diversity training expert in the Madison area. He's done some work with our own school district. And he's going, he's going to be giving us a proposal to assist with some additional organization-wide staff development. So that's the extent, that's the latest. And it's definitely not the extent of the work that we're doing, but that's the, the latest of efforts that we've been pursuing here as part of our, our organization's work. Any questions or suggestions?
I heard you say that you're, you communicate, communicate with WNC. I was wondering if there's communication between the Wanake Ecumenical Board Food Pantry, you know, to know where they are, what their needs are, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep, the, the Ecumenical Board representing the Food Pantry is, as, is part of those community organized discussions that WNC is putting on. There's about easily fifteen different organizations that are at the table. And this, we just had our third meeting, our fourth will be in November, but the Ecumenical Board is represented.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Todd or comments? All right, I'm going to say, Todd, thank you for pointing those things out. And I see we have three attendees still and Robert is one of them. I think it's important that we're taking all the steps necessary as we go through this. But it's also more important that the entire community acknowledge and participate in every way that you can with, within this. So that said, Dr. Random, do we have anything you'd like to say? Moved to a turn by Dr. Random. Do we have a second? Second by Kristen Rungy. Anybody want to dispute it or make any comments? All right, Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Fry?
Aye.
Kristen Rungy?
Yep.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Selner?
Yes.
Well, okay, yes.
Erin Moran? Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion approved. We're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Caitlin, good luck this week.
Good night.
Good night.